I'd like to call this Village Board Meeting to order. It is January 27, 2014. This is Village Board Meeting Number 3,067. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Abernathy?
Present.
Here. Meyer?
Here.
Semple?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Thank you. Would we please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My allegiance is provided by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get going on the normal business for the evening, I wanted just to say a few words, a little bit about what's gone on this last week, and just to communicate, and I think what our sentiments are for our whole community. It was just a whirlwind of emotions. First of all, tremendous sadness and grief with what happened on Tuesday. And at the same time, you know, I got to tell you, it was just so great to see the caring and love expressed by so much of the community towards the family, and really to come together as a community with the Porch Light Campaign, Mundeline Moms raising the money. So many good things happening there. And amidst sadness and grief, for me, I've honestly never been more proud to be a Mundeline resident as during this week, seeing all that go on. And so, I hope I express a little bit from what others have felt. And I wanted to also take the opportunity to just express appreciation for the responders, the police that showed up, and really, in a moment like that, kind of a once-in-a-career event like that for those men and women, it comes back to training. Good training, good education, good leadership to prepare for that moment, and attention to detail. And I just appreciate that we have such professionals. So in that sense, please accept our, and I believe the other trustees', gratitude and appreciation there. Same time, it was another rough week. Those of us that are kind of connected in with some of the volunteer parts of the community, the Turkula family. Tom Turkula was MJFL's treasurer for 17 years, and they lost their youngest boy to cancer yesterday morning. So our thoughts and prayers are with them. So he graduated from Mundeline just last year, and was on the volleyball team with my son. But Tom is just a -- you'll see him running around. He's a jogger, long-distance runner, and I know you'll recognize his face if you saw him. So I wanted just to reach out and express our condolences there as well. Okay? Here we go, with our normal business. Let's go to Approval of Minutes. Item four on the agenda. I need a motion to approve the Village Board Meeting minutes from January 13. This is Exhibit One.
So moved.
Motion by Voss, second by Abernathy. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Before I do that, I have one comment on the agenda for the January 13 meeting. There was incorrect wording. It was concerning that it was Exhibit CEDC-3, Item C, concerning the Waltz properties. The motion read, "Motion to pass an ordinance." It really should have said, "Motion to authorize staff to draft an ordinance," not -- it wasn't to the passing point. It was just to draft it. The exhibit, which was actually attached, was correct. It was just the wording on the actual motion. So it's going to be corrected to just read, "Motion to authorize staff to draft an ordinance granting a parking variation to Section 20.56.140 of the zoning ordinance to allow a reduction in the number of required parking spaces at 1270 Townline Road, subject to conditions." So it doesn't change the actual ordinance that is coming up tonight. It was ju -- I just wanted to make that correction on the original agenda. So we don't need to take any other action. That is correct?
Yes.
Correct. Just wanted to put that out there. That will be changed.
Okay.
So now we can go ahead with approving the minutes.
Okay. Go ahead and call the roll then.
Voss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we need a motion to pass the minutes from the Village Board Committee of the Hall Meeting from January 13. This is Exhibit Two.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Kim, second by Sullivan. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss?
Abstain.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Motion carries. At this point in our meeting, comes the time when we can have public commentary. If anyone in the audience would wish to address the board, go ahead. Just state your name for the clerk.
Good evening. I'm Jody Ware. I reside at 511 Saucyto Drive. My other place that I reside is 1350 West Holly Street, where I'm the superintendent of Mundeline High School, and spend a lot of my time. But as the mayor has said, last Tuesday morning was a moment of jolt to the village of Mundeline. And I was in a location that had 2,200 students and over 250 staff members at the high school. And I think what the mayor said is, it was about training, preparation, leadership. Mundeline High School had to go into a hard lockdown because of an incident that occurred within 1,000 feet of our school. And that decision to go into a hard lockdown was through the training and communication with the Mundeline police. This year, we began our school year with a full day of five different breakout sessions that the entire staff participated in. And prior to that, we spent the summer writing a crisis plan following the Sandy Hook incident with the Mundeline police. And because of that, I want to tell you that I can't compliment enough the communication between the Mundeline police and Mundeline High School in a matter of minutes to protect our students. The preparation, the plan, the practice that occurred in every single classroom without a skipped beat. The leadership team was locked in a room and did not know what was going on. We were conducting our weekly meeting. But it was others on staff that took charge to protect our students. And I have to give credit to our school resource officer, which I can't emphasize enough, the role of the school resource officer in schools. And that was Brian Kisselberg, who then communicated with our dean of students, a former Mundeline police officer, Paul Thatcher, who then communicated with our athletic director. We were in a hard lockdown before the police even arrived to the scene, based on the information the Mundeline police had from the 911 call. And so, if I, as a community member, as a parent, and as a school board member, Laura Mellon's here tonight, I can't emphasize enough how, again, the training, preparation, communication, and the leadership from the Mundeline police affected our school and made it a safer place. So thank you to the Mundeline Police Department and to the village leaders.
Thank you. Anyone else? No one else? Okay. We'll close the floor and move on to the presentation of awards. Tonight, we have the presentation from the Human Relations Commission for the 2014 Diversity Awards. So I'd like to ask the chairman of that commission, Gailene Henry, to please address us.
These are our fourth annual awards. You will know, we received multiple nominations this year, just like we have in previous years. These awards are designed to celebrate individuals or organizations in the community that promote the diversity, which is such a great gift to all of us in Mundeline. We awarded two this year. The first to Commander Fred Cleora from the Mundeline Police Department, and the second to Assistant Principal James Ontango from the high school.
Thank you. Let's start with Fred Cleora. If you could, come on up, and we have a proclamation here, and you were -- if you can just --
Congratulations.
Do you want me to, Trustee Voss? She would like -- can you bring that back there?
Absolutely.
Bring that back.
I think it should be part of the record.
We will put it in part of the record, okay?
Thank you.
All right, here we go.
All right. Whereas the Village Board believes in the importance of celebrating the actions of individuals and organizations for extraordinary efforts in recognizing and embracing diversity by annually accepting nominations and selecting recipients of a diversity award, and whereas the Human Relations Commission received and reviewed nominations for potential diversity award recipients, and whereas Ms. Kay Dickman nominated Mr. Fred Cleora, Mundeline Police Department Commander, an individual dedicated to promoting cross-cultural relations in the village of Mundeline for a diversity award. Among a few of Mr. Cleora's accomplishments are being the Community Resource Center liaison, Mundeline High School liaison officer, his leadership in the First Latino Citizen Police Academy, and his longtime devotion to the Mundeline community. Whereas at their December 18, 2013 meeting, the Human Relations Commission compared the nomination with the diversity award criteria and found the nomination meets the criteria outlined in the program, and whereas the Human Relations Commission unanimously recommends Mr. Fred Cleora for the diversity award in the community category to the Village Board. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and Board of Trustees of the village of Mundeline, Lake County, Illinois, that Mr. Fred Cleora is to be recognized for demonstrating leadership and embodying excellence in creating programs to celebrate diversity, promote tolerance, and build cultural understanding. Be it further resolved that Mr. Fred Cleora be presented with the diversity award in recognition of his work, proclaimed, signed, and sealed this 27th day of January 2014 in the village of Mundeline. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right, real quick, can you guys hear me?
Obviously, I want to thank everyone involved. Kay, who are you guys? Kay, and everyone else who nominated me. It was really the chief's idea. Shortly after he took office, he approached me and said, "Hey, I got an idea here. Why don't we do a Latino Citizen Police Academy?" And of course, it was very successful. But thanks to him, the deputy chief's obviously supported me, all you guys. You know, this is a team effort, so I can't do anything without your support, obviously. But most importantly, you know, a lot of my attendees are here in the back there, so I, you know, this couldn't have happened without their attendance. They never missed a class, whether it was cold or not. A lot of questions. Our class was supposed to go until about 9 o'clock at night. We were there until 10, 10:30 at night, so I want to thank you. Thank you guys in the back there.
Well, thank you.
So I think we continue building these bridges between not just the community of Mundeline and the police department, but now the Latino community and the Mundeline Police Department. So I'm very proud of them. Obviously, I'm very proud of our department, and you know, the village has a hall, so just thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. The next award goes to James Ontango. I'm going to read this, enter it into the record, and then present it to you. If you could say a few words after that, that'd be great. Whereas the Village Board believes in the importance of celebrating the actions of individuals and organizations for extraordinary efforts in recognizing and embracing diversity by annually accepting nominations and selecting recipients of a diversity award, and whereas the Human Relations Commission received and reviewed nominations for potential diversity award recipients, and whereas Dr. Jody Ware, Mundeline High School superintendent, nominated Mr. James Ontango, Mundeline High School Assistant Principal, an individual devoted to building a strong relationship between Mundeline High School and the local Latino community for a diversity award. Among a few of Mr. Ontango's accomplishments are his leadership in the Universidad de Padres program and his work with the Latino Citizens Police Academy. Whereas at their December 18, 2013 meeting, the Human Relations Commission compared the nomination with the diversity award criteria and found the nomination meets the criteria outlined in the program, and whereas the Human Relations Commission unanimously recommends Mr. James Ontango for the diversity award in the education category to the Village Board. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and Board of Trustees of the village of Mundeline, Lake County, Illinois, that Mr. James Ontango is to be recognized for demonstrating leadership and embodying excellence in working with programs to celebrate diversity, promote tolerance, and build cultural understanding. Be it further resolved that Mr. James Ontango be presented with a diversity award in recognition of his work, proclaimed, signed, and sealed this 27th day of January 2014 in the village of Mundeline. Congratulations.
We came to Mundeline High School, both Dr. Ware and myself, six years ago, and we noticed right away that there was a huge achievement gap. There was a communication gap with our Latino population. As you folks know, we're about 40 percent Latino at Mundeline High School. And what the Universidad de Padres really is, is really teaching folks how to navigate the American educational school system, navigate the village of Mundeline, and navigate the American culture. This is really an opportunity to narrow the achievement gap. Dr. Ware has been a great leader, both in the classroom and out of the classroom. We know for a fact that parents are a catalyst for student achievement and student success, and we're so proud. I would also like to tell, thank all the Universidad de Padres aquí. Gracias por todo su apoyo estar aquí conmigo. Eso es para usted también.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, village, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Okay. Next on the agenda are public hearings. There's none tonight. Then we go to the mayor's report. There's three items on the agenda. First regards the negotiating team for the Lakewood Town Home Development. I need a motion to appoint trustee Sullivan and trustee Voss to the ad hoc negotiating team for Lakewood Town Home Development.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Meyer. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we need a motion to adopt a resolution canceling the Village Board Meeting of April 14, 2014, and rescheduling the board meeting to April 7, 2014, at 8:00 p.m. This is Exhibit Three.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Meyer, second by Abernathy. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Sullivan.
When we cancel meetings, is it necessary to put in the motion a reason for cancellation?
No, I don't. All right, thank you. One. Anyone else? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, a motion to adopt a resolution canceling the Village Board Meeting of April 26, 2014, and authorizing the village administrator to approve payment of bills between the period of May 26, 2014, and June 9, 2014. This is Exhibit Four.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Voss, second by Abernathy. Discussion?
Yes, mayor. When you read that, you said to cancel the meeting April 26.
Sorry, did I?
Yeah.
This is a motion to adopt a resolution canceling the board meeting of May 26, okay? And authorizing the village administrator to approve payment of bills between May 26 and June 9. I'm sorry, okay?
And as always, when we cancel a meeting this far in advance, let's all just keep in mind that we may need to reschedule that meeting instead of just canceling it.
We will have our antennas up.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Motion carries. That is it for my report. Moving on to trustee reports, we have Public Works, trustee Meyer.
I don't have anything on the agenda for tonight, Mr. Boucher. Anything you need to say?
Not specifically, other than how we are utilizing salt at this point, because it is in very limited supply. We are going into more of a conservation mode with salt, so there'll be limited use on the roadways. So you need to take even more precaution than you have in normal winter conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Voss.
I'm sorry, can I just follow up? I know that we get an allotment every year, and we're allowed to get like 120 percent of our allotment. Where are we on that allotment?
We've already purchased all of our allotment, and we tried to see if the vendor is willing to sell beyond what our allotment is, and he is not, the vendor is not. We've explored some other opportunities with other vendors. They are also not looking to sell anyone else's salt other than their current contracts. With basically what happens in these situations is, the vendors tend to stockpile and save it for the tollway and highway agencies. They DOT.
And, I mean, so let's assume that winter continues as it is. I know that we've purchased our allotment. How much of it do we have left?
We have about 1,800 tons, which is more than enough to carry us through the winter. But we want to be conservative as we go through the winter, because if we are to see this current trend continue, we would run out if we just used it as we would normally.
And it doesn't work below, I mean, it wouldn't work now, anyway.
You would have to combine it with liquid calcium chloride and use an extremely high amount of salt and calcium chloride to melt at these temperatures. You are correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't have anything else tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Well, let me just ask this, those that are watching publicly. I mean, if we're not, you know, if salt doesn't work at these temperatures, and we're going to conserve, obviously, road conditions are going to be different than a normal winter, and I think people get it, and obviously, we need to slow down. So I hope those watching can get it. I don't know if we need to maybe word out, in the sense that we're in this conservation mode. I think most people get it, but let's just be cognizant, and when people ask, we tell them where we're at on that. We're not the only ones. Yes?
Well, Mr. Mayor, this is a good old-fashioned winter, not just because it's so cold, but because the streets are not clear pavement. Think back, for young enough, or not so young, you remember, that streets weren't clear in winters long ago when they were this cold, and people just had to use their heads and drive slower, drive more. And, but you'll be fine.
Okay? All right. Let's move on. Finance Committee, trustee Sullivan.
I do, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we have two motions, the first of which I intend to abstain from, because it's going to charge the paid and rendered expenses to the reduction of the attendance in the annual school attendance. And so, I would ask that, remember, our finance committee, make that motion.
I -- I'll take it. Yes, I'd like to make the motion to approve the payment of bills as indicated on dispersment pending report for trustee Ed Sullivan in the amount of $68.93, and that would be Exhibit FIN-1. Second.
Motion by Meyer, second by Abernathy. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
I abstain.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The second motion is a motion to approve payment of bills, total being $1,820.99. This payment to AT&amp;T. We have this separated again, because there will be an abstention. I will make this motion.
Second.
Motion by Sullivan, second by Abernathy. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Abstain.
Semple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
This evening on our omnibus list of motions, we have a motion to pay bills in the amount of $1,658,933.79. The bulk of this amount is made up of the following. Payment to Burger Excavating for our street program this past year, this amount, $294,227.32. The Weston Solutions, a payment toward the construction of the village hall, this amount Cardinal Square for a Tier One tax increment financing note, that is the incentive note from TIF funds, this an amount of $143,249.43. Finally, an amount to Mr. Moreno for legal services, $86,812.50. And generally, we get one bill from Mr. Moreno. On behalf of the board, I want to thank him for his services, continue to value his advice, and even though a large number, number for the amount of time put in, a very reasonable amount. That too is part of this omnibus list of bills to pay. Unless anyone has a question or concern, I'll say that's all I have. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Next, Public Safety Committee, trustee Semple.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. We have two motions this evening, both pertaining to the police department, and we'll have the chief kind of walk us through briefly each one of these motions after we make the motion in a second. With that, I'll make a motion to pass an ordinance repealing ordinance 03-04-11 and creating an ordinance regarding administrative education system, seen as Exhibit PS-1 in our board packets this evening.
Second.
Motion by Semple, second by Abernathy. Discussion?
Chief, can you walk us through what we're doing here, real quick?
Yes. So what we're doing here is, there's a desire, and always was when the AHO system was created, to take some additional things in front of the hearing officer. So what we're doing is expanding this to include vehicle citations, and then some minor criminal citations, such as curfew, maybe possession of tobacco, those types of things. Currently, the process is when a parking citation is issued, the individual has two options, pay the citation and/or come in, refute the citation, and ask for a court date. And what we do is assign them a court date to go to branch court, or the judicial system, where it's seen in front of a judge, and so well, as there and presents the case, et cetera. This changes that procedure only in the fact that the individual can still come in, they could still refute the ticket. They'd now be sent to the administrative hearing officer as opposed to a branch court. It does a couple of things, both for the citizen and for the village. It cuts down on our ability, or our overtime for sending officers to court. It speeds up the process for the citizen, because there's two dates a month now that we can assign and get them in there quicker if they chose to argue the ticket, if you will. So that's really what we're doing with the AHO. The second motion that you're considering here is in connection with the first. Because we're doing this, it changes some of the existing parking ordinances that it relates to the immobilization of vehicles, or the Denver boot, if you will. When someone has more than five parking citations, that boot can be applied. That process will stay the same, except for, they would be able to now be heard in front of the hearing officer if they wanted to present their case. They don't really have that option as it stands now, or they could go in front of a, you know, a judge at the circuit court. So we're cleaning up a little of the language also as we're in here, and changing that. So we've made some adjustments, or some additions and deletions and modifications. Um, so we've made some adjust, or some additions and deletions and modifications to the language and the fee structure, et cetera. Um, but really, the intent here is to open up what we take to the AHO, um, so that we can unclog some of the, you know, the branch court system, speed the system up. Um, sorry. Thank you.
Very good. Oh, trustee Voss.
Um, I remember when this ordinance was initially created, one of the concerns by residents was that they have the option to go to court instead of to the hearing officer. So that hasn't been changed in this, right?
Larry? Good evening, everyone.
Um, when the official ordinance back in 2003 was adopted, uh, because it's administrative proceeding, uh, there are provisions under the administrative, uh, law in the state of Illinois which they can appeal to if they have an adverse ruling against them. That remains a remedy that they still are entitled to under the, uh, the changes that we've made. We've kind of cleaned up, um, some things that, you know, as you can see, this was adopted over 10 years ago when we first adopted the administrative hearing officer. Some things have changed in the statute, and some issues have come up over the years as some of our procedural things. We've tried to take an opportunity with the expansion that the chief has mentioned, kind of clean up some of those other issues. But the, they're basic remedies, and, and we've had a couple of cases go to administrative review where people have, um, appealed further the, the administrative hearing officer's decision. So those provisions haven't changed at all.
Okay.
So they still have the authority, the ability, um, under administrative review to appeal their decision to circuit court if they're not satisfied with the adjudication at the hearing officer's stage.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep, clerk? Oh, wait, sorry. Trustee Sullivan.
But as I understand it, Mr. Lawler Zern, everyone must come to the hearing officer first, or now a violation of traffic or vehicle seizure.
Well, the, uh, expansion of the program that, with the chief has talked about, really addresses parking tickets, non-moving violations. So we're not sending speeding tickets, we're not sending red light tickets and stop sign violations. These are parking tickets, these are vehicle compliance tickets, not having registration, um, some equipment violations, things like that. Those are the only, um, uh, tickets that are going to administrative hearing officer. As the chief explained, the difference is, instead of going to court, um, they're gonna go to the administrative hearing officer if they want to contest their parking ticket. Uh, one thing, um, that the chief didn't mention is, uh, one of the benefits to the residents is, um, anybody who's been to the circuit court in the last few years just knows that the, the fines have stayed pretty much the same. The court costs are going, you know, through the roof. And the, uh, the judge has to impose a minimum fine on our ordinance, uh, but the judge has no control over the court cost. So if somebody has a parking ticket for, you know, parking on the wrong side of the street or something like that, they get a $25.00 fine, and they probably get $200.00 in court costs. By taking these cases to the administrative hearing officer, the resident, if they're found liable for the parking ticket, is just gonna pay $25.00. They're not paying the hundreds of dollars in the court cost. Uh, and as the chief mentioned, more importantly, it's more efficient, uh, because they can get in a couple times a month as opposed to having to wait till the officer's next date, which is gonna come up in the next month or so. And, and from the police department standpoint, it saves an enormous amount of overtime, because we don't have to have officers present at the hearing officer. We can, uh, go forward on the citations that were issued there. So we save a lot of money in overtime in that respect there. Um, but one of the things that we cleaned up in the second ordinance is the, uh, the ability for somebody to go into the police department, request a court date. Now they can come in if they want to contest a ticket, they're issued a, um, a hearing officer date, which would be much quicker and much less expensive to them if they're not liable.
Well, there, there is little doubt, I mean, no doubt, that both sides of the citation, if it's to be contested, are going to find it far more efficient and less expensive coming before the hearing officer. But you still have the view of some that this is the village's job here, and that the hearing officer is an employee of the village. And of course, I've observed the hearing officer, and I think all of us understand that the hearing officer is fair and impartial, and I'm not concerned about arguing that. But still, there may be the suggestion, just to be understanding of this, you must come on these violations to the hearing officer. You do not have as a first choice circuit court.
That's correct.
You have circuit court as an appeal process.
That, that's absolutely right.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Anything else? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Simple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. With the second motion, I'll make the motion to pass an ordinance amending ordinance number 74-7-21, Chapter 10, regarding an ordinance regulating parking vehicles seen as Exhibit PS-2 in our board packets this evening.
Second.
Motion by Simple, second by Abernathy. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Simple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Gunther, anything else from the Police Department for this evening?
Nothing at this time.
Chief Sashko, Fire Department?
Just a quick reminder with the weather we're in, that keep an eye on our seniors in town here, and make sure everybody stays warm. We are set up for our warming centers and warming shelter. That information's up on the village's website. Our cert team is activated, and, um, I was just watching the news earlier today that we're supposed to get like three or four more of these vortexes before winter leaves us. So I guess we have to get used to this.
Thanks for sharing that good news.
Yeah. That's all, sir.
Thanks for the good news, chief. Mr. Mayor, meetings back to you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, Community and Economic Development Committee, trustee Voss.
Thank you. I just, um, a couple of things. This is a busy, uh, time of year for our local organizations. We were at the GLMV chamber where their new board was introduced and sworn in. Wednesday night, we were at the annual dinner from Mundaline Community Connections, where they will serve on their board. Um, Thursday, as a reminder, is our business appreciation breakfast for business owners. And, um, I just want to echo what Chief Sashko said about, let's all be good neighbors, check on your neighbors, and especially if you have elderly neighbors, let's all keep an eye out and make sure that we're helping out.
Thank you. Next up, Communication and Marketing Committee, trustee Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report, unless, uh, Mr. Lovato, is there anything? Okay.
No, I would just say that the branding, uh, process is moving forward, and I think last week, we completed all the focus group meetings, and so it's inching its way forward at this time.
Well, so are we gonna have a focus group with the board?
Yeah, that's, uh, coming. I mean, I think ultimately, the board is the, the focus group. So, uh, trying to do all of our legwork ahead of time so that we can present something to the board with some, uh, input from the community, so the board can ultimately make a decision about the brand.
Okay. Great, thank you. Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, trustee Abernathy.
Um, I have nothing. Do you have anything, Mr. Boucher? Except I will say our streets, even though through this cold, you have, the, the Public Works has been doing a great job keeping our streets clear.
Yes, they have. They're, they're trying their best. It's, it's difficult winter. Uh, we have one noteworthy item as far as transportation is concerned, that we are still working towards that end on the Holly Street land acquisition. We had sent out the final offer letters of compensation to each of the property owners affected by this project based on the appraisals that had come in last week. So that, that ball is rolling, and we will work towards, uh, a final, uh, offer to those property owners, and then continue along the eminent domain process.
Um, just a note that I think I'd like to ask. I get a lot of residents that complain about snow getting piled in their driveway when plows go by. Maybe let them know why that needs, I mean, it, it's not like you want that to happen, but that's just, uh...
We do get those same calls every winter, and unfortunately, that is just the, the nature of the beast. We unfortunately cannot address every single driveway in town, because then we'd never be able to address the roadways if we were plowing snow out of driveways. There are just simply too many of them to handle as a municipal organization. So we ask that the residents cooperate with us and remove the snow from their driveway prints, but more importantly, remove it in a fashion that does not place it back onto the roadway. And most of the residents are very cooperative and very appreciative of our services.
Yes. Thank you.
Done, okay.
That's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any other reports? Trustee has anything else? Okay, let's go to the scheduled business portion, the omnibus vote items. We have Exhibits A through H. Does any trustee wish to pull off any of these items?
Exhibit A, please, Mr. Mayor.
A is an alpha?
Yes.
All right, trustee Kim, picking off item A. Anyone else? Okay, then I need a motion to pass the omnibus items B through H.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Voss, second by Abernathy. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Very good. Let's go to exhibit, or, or item A. Trustee Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I know this reflects the, um, the TIF note that was discussed at last meeting. There was a meeting, uh, prior to the board meeting. I just had a quick question in clarification, that the front says it's a budgeted item, but the back says it's not. So I just wanted that clarification for administration.
I'll defer that to our finance director.
It was a budgeted item in a different account, but it was, the dollar amounts were budgeted, just as the account never used to pay at all.
Okay, so this is right then, in that it's, okay. That's it?
That's it.
Would you like me to make the motion?
Please.
Okay. Um, a motion to approve department purchase order and payment in the amount of $143,249.43 from Mundaline Downtown Properties LLC for Tier 1 TIF note interest.
Motion by Kim.[1746.51]